Welcome to this week's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen. Coming to you live on WRPS from the H. Bernard Monahan Memorial Room at Rockland Town Hall. On the agenda this week, we've got a presentation from Reimagine Rockland, a one-day license, and license renewals. Now here's the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Ed Kimball.
Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting. Would you all please rise and join us for a pledge of allegiance? Mr. Ryan, would you like to do the honors?
Pledge of allegiance, flag, United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video, on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently-recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. With that, tonight, on an open forum, we have Veterans Agent Vincent Fontaine to give us an update on this upcoming tri-town parade.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak about the parade. This year, it's the 64th Annual Tri-Town Parade. The town of Rockland is hosting. The theme is the 100th anniversary of the entry into World War I. Stock time is at 9:00. First call is at 8:30, and we'll be lining up down Union Street in front of Hold Lee So we have six different divisions. It should be a really big parade. Unfortunately, it's going to be a little cold. So please, if you're going, if you're going to attend, please dress warm. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You did a great job, yeah.
Next up, we have minutes, open session minutes of October 17th, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All those in favor?
One abstention.
Four, one abstention. On unfinished business, we're going to take one item out of order tonight. We'll take item number five, Majestic Wellness LLC, Ernesto Caparata, RMD letter request. Ernesto?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and all, good evening. My name is Ernesto Caparata, President of Seven Hills Corporation, Rose Day Development Company based here in Massachusetts. I'm here tonight representing Seven Hills Holding Trust. Seven Hills Holding Trust owns a parcel of vacant land located, excuse me, off Pond Street, behind, adjacent to the Home Depot. Seven Hills has entered into an agreement with Majestic Wellness LLC for the development and construction of medical marijuana facility on-site. I believe we had presented with send your presentation. I brought some extra copies, just anybody needs one.
I think we all have them on our books, and I think we received them via email as well.
I also brought some aerial photos. So the intent will be to build a facility about 70,000 square feet, which would consist of cultivation, manufacturing, processing, and dispensary of medical marijuana. As anticipated, it probably would take about six months in permitting, probably another six, eight months for building the facility. So we have members here of Majestic Wellness LLC, which I'll introduce in a moment. So my involvement there will be essentially in the real estate end of the transaction, looking to be the landlord of the facility. I will be also working for, on behalf of Majestic, as a representative, to represent them with all the local permitting and supervise on the construction. So my interest in here will be limited to the real estate and not, will not be participating in the ownership of the Majestic. However, I will be also working on behalf of Majestic as a consultant to help out in any way I can. So if you have any question for me at this point, I can introduce.
Does the board have any questions? Mr. Ryan?
This area's always come up in different zoning battles and where the neighborhood puts up a little bit of struggle of everything being put in that area. And I just wonder what's the plan for separating the neighborhood from the business?
Certainly, good question. I'm glad you brought it up. I should have brought it up myself. Essentially, the parcel's 28.5 acres, so it's, you know, a large parcel. This point is anticipated about, only about three acres will be utilized for the facilities. The three acres will be located closest to the Home Depot site, so essentially away from any neighborhood. Also, the plans are the land is going to be subdivided probably in three, minimum three lots, which will separate, will create a buffer between the residential neighborhood and the medical marijuana facility. The, we have a 28.5 acres again, of which about 13 acres are uplands, so we have about the majority is wetland. The wetland portion consists of wooded swamp. Essentially, we have matured trees, 50, 60 feet tall trees, that is the wetland untouchable. So it creates really the natural screening separating any, you know, visually you can't see anything, anything from.
I have an additional question follow-up. It looks like the only road front that you have is on Pond Street. Are you looking to get an easement, or are you thinking of utilizing that frontage on Pond Street?
Pond Street, yeah. Pond Street. So essentially, we do have, the site has access, legal access through Wilson Street, but you have to go through a residential neighborhood there, which we certainly don't want to do that. So we'll be coming in from Pond Street. We have a legal frontage meets all zoning requirements of the town of Rockland. We also most likely will be using Wilson Street just for emergency vehicle only.
Okay.
A few questions.
Go ahead.
My first question was regarding the entrance. And so that's helpful to know. So the paper roads back there, would you envision, or are you planning on activating any of the paper roads?
No.
Back there?
No.
So those are our limits?
Yeah, those are our limits. Essentially, aside from Wilson Street, which is a construct.
And that would just be emergency?
Yeah, we anticipate will be an emergency or maybe a single lot, family home there, and then just the emergency. We do have access of Pepper Street through the Curry Street, I believe. We have one coming in from Turner. Those are pepper, we saw. We look into, absolutely don't touch that, leave it as a natural screen.
Okay. At the end of your presentation, you mentioned the possibility of acquiring two additional acres?
Correct.
Would those be parcels that like are, that are already zoned in the H1 district?
Absolutely, yeah. They'll be zoned in the same H1 district, and they'll be adjacent to the three acres that they'll be, you know, that still will be located. So they want to be next to, for security and all that. So again, that's on the side of the Home Depot away from.
So perfect. So there wouldn't be any desire to acquire any residential zoned properties and to convert them?
No.
Okay.
No. Essentially, the H1 district is the only district in Rockland where this type of use is allowed.
Yep.
So it has to be the, but, yeah.
So I guess my question is, there aren't any other properties, though, that you would be seeking to incorporate in the H1 district? Everything, so there's no parcels?
We intend, we intend to keep the same, the zone the same as it's right now.
Okay. And I just, oh, you know, I grew up on a Turner Road, so I'm, and so I'm familiar, oh, yeah, my paper was there, and so my interests are a little bit parochial, but, you know, but I also know that the town, and two years ago, I was zoned that area, oh, like for H1, for use like this, and, you know, honestly, I, you know, I...
Yeah, at the time, I mean, the site is on, the current zoning allows a multitude of uses, from retail to the industrial to manufacturing. A lot of those detail can be pretty disturbing and invasive to neighborhoods.
Yep, so this is non-
This is essentially the one that requires the use is fine for it. You know, one time, we were proposing the 80,000 square foot supermarket. That will create a couple thousand cars trips per day.
And the issue back then was all the paper roads and stuff?
Yeah, this type of use, I mean, you know, if somebody tells Majestic they will have 200 clients a day, I think they'll be very happy with that, you know.
Okay. And I know this is the beginning of a process, I mean...
Yeah, it's a long process, absolutely. And then, I mean, this will be going through the public processing with, through the planning board and so forth, where all the neighbors will be notified and will be attending. We intend to reach out to the neighbors, have a neighborhood, you know, a meeting with the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
So essentially, we, this is the first step. If we, you know, if Majestic doesn't get a host community agreement, that's not to talk about.
I guess, to recap, I mean, like, I remember five years ago, in that whole process, and I think our play on both sides, there was a lot of miscommunication, misinformation, and number one, hopefully, if this does move forward, there could be a dialogue between everyone, you know, going forward. But the fact that you anticipate and you're planning right now on only using all areas that are already in the H1 zoned, a parcel-
For this type of use, correct.
Yes, is, I think is important for everyone to know, so...
No, I have my word on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, my mic.
Mr. Chuck, your mic, please.
It's on. Nope, it's not. Yes, it is. Wait a minute, let's try it now. Do it now, because I know no one wants to miss a word I say. Is it working now?
Yes, it is.
All right. I have met with Mr. Capriata on a couple of occasions. He has gone over the host community agreement and indicated a willingness to sign that. He is looking for a letter of support for his project. I know we've given out a few other letters. And he has gone over his plan. He does have some of his team, if any of the members wish to talk to them. I can't speak to the CEO, Mr. Repone, who was in the backyard. Hi, Tom. It's been about 30 years, but he's, I dealt with him personally when I was the state rep, when he was in charge of the public safety and prisons here in Massachusetts. So one of the questions that comes up often is security. So I can certainly fault for Mr. Repone and his due diligence to getting the job done right. Mr. Capriata's agreed to sign the host community agreement.
I'll approve.
Second.
Okay. That was quick. All those in favor? No, a lot of work goes into it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, and thank you on behalf of Majestic.
Thank you.
For all of the LLC.
We'll talk tomorrow.
One of the things it's going to do for everybody is what the site is.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we'll go back to our original order, item number three.
We'll do the PACE program.
Mr. Chairman, we've been working with Mass Development on a number of different properties and projects, from Park Street to the S.D.'s cleanup, the Park Street fire, and a couple of other projects here. And it brought us into a number of conversation with different people within Mass Development. But as a result of those conversations, we were introduced to Wendy O'Malley, who was in charge of the PACE program. And she came down to talk to us, and I believe she's here, is Wendy here? Thank you for coming right up. The PACE program is an economic development tool for the cities and towns in Massachusetts. It involves energy upgrades for a more competitive environment, I'm reading from the brochure, and attracting and retaining businesses through lower energy costs. It's just one more tool we hope to place in our economic development box for businesses here in Rockland and businesses that wish to locate here in Boston to get lower-cost energy improvements to their property. And I'm thrilled that Wendy brought it to us, and there's an opportunity here, I think, for Rockland to actually set the pace, so to speak, for the rest of the state, as we may be the first community to accept it, and the provisions have to be accepted by each municipality. Wendy, I hope I didn't take too much of your presentation away.
You did not. Thank you, Alan. I really appreciate the opportunity to present the PACE program, which stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy on behalf of Mass Development Finance Agency. I have prepared a presentation, which is lengthy and contains a number of details, which I won't go over every slide, but what I'll try to do is give you a good overview of the program and the benefits to the municipality. And if there's any questions, please feel free to ask me during the presentation or after. But as Alan said, PACE financing was enabled by the Commonwealth in August of 2016, when the governor signed an act to promote energy diversity. Property assessed clean energy financing is a different financing option than alternative energy financing options, because it utilizes the process of levying a betterment assessment and securing that assessment with a lien that's placed on the property. Because of that unique repayment structure, it gives property owners more opportunity to look at comprehensive energy upgrades at their facilities, and should allow them to hopefully look at a better project in terms of energy efficiency or renewable installations at that building. Because PACE is enabled statewide by this act, there is a requirement, as Alan said, that each municipality must opt-in one time to allow property owners to apply for PACE financing through Mass Development. In conjunction with the Department of Energy Resources, Mass Development and D.O.E.R. will be reviewing applications that property owners submit, and we will be looking at the financial underwriting and technical guidelines that we are developing currently, and will be rolling out, we're targeting early 2018 for the program launch. We'll be utilizing an open-market, third-party, direct financing structure, so no public funds are going to be used. Mass Development will not be using funds to loan. We will be allowing property owners to select lenders of their choice. We feel they're in the best position to work with a lender that can determine what option best fits their needs. So we will not control that process, but we hope that this will enable property owners to get the most competitive rates for the financing. It should allow them flexibility to select from lenders with, hopefully, the best terms and rates for their project. We also are going to be utilizing a method that requires the municipality to bill and collect the betterment assessment on the municipal property tax bill. That is a requirement because of the Mass state law in terms of how betterment assessments are billed and collected. If you're not familiar with a betterment assessment, they've been used typically for public infrastructure upgrades, such as sewer or sidewalk upgrades. Nationally, PACE has been enabled in 20 states, and this has allowed the energy financing to be repaid through the betterment assessment. That, in Mass state law, must be billed and collected on the municipal property tax bill. That is one of the reasons why municipalities must opt-in one time to allow PACE in their community.
We've met also with the treasurer and the collector and town accountant to go over all of this, as well as the assessor, and they are in full agreement that it's easily implemented. I shouldn't necessarily say easily, but it's not a problem.
Under commercial PACE, and I want to make sure everyone understands, this is for commercial only, this is not for residential properties. Under the Mass statute, commercial properties include commercial buildings, industrial buildings, and multifamily, five units or more. So this is not for any building, any multifamily that's four units and below, or single family. That would be different legislation that would need to be passed in the Commonwealth, and that has not been passed at this point. The maximum term for energy financing under this program is 20 years. That is pretty lengthy for energy financing. That should allow property owners to include more upgrades at their facility. Under the program, the cost of the energy savings must exceed the annual debt service for that project. So it must be positive cash flow from the onset. PACE is really different, because conceptually, if you think of what a building owner is using currently for their building utility expenditures, PACE is intended to redirect a portion of what that property owner is currently spending for utilities, so that they can invest that into new energy-efficient or renewable equipment at their facility. Because it's repaid through an assessment, it has unique benefits to a property owner. It could potentially be off-balance sheet. It comes from a different bucket of, I'll call it credit, in terms of where lenders are looking at. They're looking at not just the borrower's credit, but they're also looking at the project aspect. So they're looking at the energy savings, they're looking at the project attributes. That is a key component of the PACE projects and the PACE approvals. Under Mass law, the other thing that is very unique for PACE is that all, is that the PACE lien is senior to all other private liens, except for a lien for municipal property taxes. Because of that seniority, PACE lenders, and I'll put them in two groups, there are banks, and there are lenders who just finance PACE projects. And so they look at these very uniquely. They, they have different underwriting considerations in terms of how they look at these projects, and the seniority of the lien makes it very attractive to them in terms of where they want to invest their money, and what type of rates that they would offer to the property owners for these financings. A PACE, a PACE betterment assessment cannot be accelerated, so only the assessment that is due each year is the obligation of that owner. If a property owner is unsure about the future of their business, and they don't know what the future holds in terms of building ownership, that typically can be a barrier to investing in their building or an energy system, because they don't necessarily want to invest or put up all the upfront cost for a new energy-efficient system or renewable system when they may not own that building for the term of that investment. Under the PACE financing, the assessment and the lien transfer automatically to new ownership if the building is sold. So again, that makes it attractive in terms of alternative financings for energy equipment. On the last page of the presentation, what I did is I just laid out the different parties to the transaction in terms of the collecting and billing of the assessments, how the liens are secured. Mass Development is in the middle. We are the program administrator, so we are creating the guidelines and all the documents under which all these, under which the assessments will operate. There are five parties. Mass Development is the program administrator. There's the lender, who the property owner works with and secures the financing from. There's obviously the property owner, the municipality, in this case, Rockland. And if there's an existing mortgage holder, consent is required from them in order to have PACE approved for financing. There are agreements and there are actions that are listed on this flow chart, so if you want me to explain any of them, but this is intended to show kind of the responsibilities of each party. And I know that was a lot of information, very quickly, so if there's any questions or comments.
Do you have a coffee?
I'm sorry.
I have a lot of questions. Anyone want to go first?
If you can go first.
I have a lot of questions. I'm sorry. So I guess we'll just, they're kind of not in any logical order, they're just kind of my brain thoughts as I went through this. But I guess the first one's for Alan and maybe for the other members of the board, since I'm the newbie on the board. What is Rockland's history with betterments? Because I know, I've been here almost 12 years, and I've never paid one. So my concern just here is that people, businesses may be unfamiliar with the payment of betterments, and I was just wondering, just from fellow board members, how residents, you know, have recent residents paid betterments? Is this going to be something that they're like, what is this?
We haven't had any betterments, but in this particular case, this would be a business going out and taking a loan on their own property to make their own betterment, but it services as a lien that would show up, and it goes with the property. Somebody buying solar energy for their house today, for example, if they did a lease rather than a purchase, typically either have to settle the lease or transfer that lease, provided the solar company finds them credit-worthy.
Yep.
In this particular case, because it's a lease that goes with the property and they sold it, if they were going to sell it, it's a lien that would show up on the bill automatically. So we don't have a-
But the lien wouldn't be to the town. The lien would be to whoever the leaseholder is, or whoever they've lent to.
To the lender.
But in this situation, it looks like your little arrow has the municipality notice of recording of lien going to property owners. So if we're collecting it, who holds, who holds the restriction?
So when the financing closes, the lien is assigned to Mass Development?
Mm-hmm.
And then Mass Development assigns the lien to the lender. So when the financing closes, it's merely like a mortgage, it's a transaction that occurs, and then the lien is assigned right away.
So to get to your question.
Yeah.
We met with the treasurer and the tax collector. So we'll collect it.
Yep.
It'll go into an account, and John, as the treasurer, will send a check off to the appropriate party.
All right, so that leads to my-
But it's no exposure to the town.
No, that's fine. That leads to my next question, which is, who's required to, I guess, there's going to be costs to the town, because we're collecting the money, and so we have staff time that's going into collecting that money and sending checks off. Have we reimbursed it all? Do we have any financial benefit in this, other than the benefit to our commercial businesses?
No.
No, okay.
But when we met with them, when we talked about the issues of whether or not this was going to be time-consuming, we didn't expect, number one, that there was going to be an avalanche of customers. They're going to start to maybe trickle in, and there'll only be a few. And the parties, the tax collector and the treasurer, everyone involved, felt at that time that this wasn't an overwhelming burden, and certainly, it was to the benefit, it was a benefit we're able to-
No, I see the benefit. I see the benefit.
Offer the businesses.
With our, with our future agenda coming up, we're going to be talking about Reimagine Rockland, and we're pushing mixed use in the downtown. So how does this apply to mixed use? We have some old buildings in the downtown. I don't know how many of them, how many people own their, own the building and the business, but how would this apply to a mixed-use property, where maybe people who do want to invest in the downtown want to do some energy efficiency? How does it work in mixed use?
If it's a commercial building, five units or more, then it would be eligible under the legislation.
So if it's, our mixed use is, we'll have residential, potentially 40 units, and commercial on the first floor?
So that would fit under the definition of multifamily.
So when you say five units, you mean five residential units?
Five, yes.
Okay. All right, and then, okay, so I also wanted to ask about, you talked about it would, one of my questions was whether or not it would get the same priority as a tax lien, but it doesn't. It clearly gets, you said it gets a second. But who is the business owner, the one who would have to negotiate with the priority lien holder, if they have one on there? So we don't have any role in that whatsoever.
Correct.
We don't have to deal with the subordination. Okay, and then I also have, what happens on a sale? Do they just pay what they owe to us? Like, do we have to call the lender to figure out what the payoff is, and then send a bill at the closing, just like we would on a water bill? See, that's where I'm seeing our staff time adding up.
No, that's where their notifications, just like any other payoff, that the lender would send to this, to the town, and they were to arrange, we would notify what that...
You would send it to the town, and then the town would have to send it to the closing attorney, whoever's selling that property?
There would be transactions involved, correct, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, would we be allowed to charge a fee, essentially, at the closing, like we do for a final water read or a- do for a final water read or a, would it be part of our MLC? Do you know what I'm saying? Does it go on the MLC?
If there are individual recording fees, out-of-pocket costs that the municipality incurs in terms of recording a lien, we would reimburse the municipality for that.
Okay. Oh, just, but just the recording fee?
Just out-of-pocket costs for...
For the discharge or something?
Yes.
So the discharge would be from us?
The dis...
Even though the mortgage, even though the lien's in the name of the lender?
So, yes, because you're part, no, actually, what would happen is Mass. Development would be the designated administrator of that transaction. So we actually have counsel as part of the transaction that oversees the documents, that makes sure that, that ensures that all the parties are notified of the transaction in terms of their responsibilities.
So whose responsibility is the discharge?
I'm sorry?
Whose responsibility would be the discharge of the lien?
It would be the lender, because they have to agree to...
But they would pay us?
There's no payment to you? There's an out-of-pocket cost, but there's no, you're not financing anything?
No, I understand, but if we're collecting the money, so I'm just wondering, if we're collecting the money, maybe I'm just not understanding it on a...
But you're talking about the sale of a property.
Right, yep. And then they want to pay off like they would on their taxes or on their final water read or whatever.
I can't imagine it would be any different than it is now. What are you owing taxes to the town, one, and what do you owe your lenders, two?
Okay.
That payoff would be settled.
But that payoff would come to us? Or would it go directly to, that's what I'm saying. Because if the Betterment, whatever you're paying it, monthly or whatever, comes to us, how does the payoff work? Does that come to us, too?
The assessment must be dispersed as soon as it is received by the municipality. And the municipality is required to disburse that to Mass. Development or the servicer, who then disperses it to the lender. Now, there's 30 days, just like you have with property taxes, in which, you know, the property owner can remit that payment. If that becomes overdue, then it's just like a property tax. There's a notification that the lender would come and say to the municipality, you know, where's the payment? The municipality would notify them that it was not received. If you do not receive the assessment, you do not disburse it. You have no responsibility.
And how does this get, how does this get, I'm sorry, I just have a lot of this.
But it's a lien that goes with the property, so that even if somebody sold it...
So the new person buying it would assume it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So they don't have to pay it off?
No, no, it's not accelerating.
All right. Okay. So it's, okay, well, okay.
That's key, yeah.
All right. So it's assumed by the next, okay.
Yes.
All right, I didn't get that. And then my last question is, normally, when we're accepting a state statute or we're passing an ordinance or a bylaw, we need the legislative body to approve. Is there something in the state legislation that allows us to do that ourselves so that we don't need the legislative approval? I guess I'm asking where the process is.
Yes.
There is something in the statute?
The statute, as it came through, said for the Board of Selectmen. Otherwise, we'd put it on a town meeting.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Sorry for, thank you for my questions.
No, that's okay. I appreciate the questions. They're very thorough and...
I appreciate that was your last question.
Well, first of all, one of the questions I had was, oh, what benefits there would be to the town. And I know the town would, in some cases, be taking on a little more of like a role or like responsibility here. But two things, I think it's worth it. Number one, I mean, like as Ms. Hall mentioned, we're going to, in the next agenda item, I believe, I'll be talking about how we're attracting businesses to Rockland. And I think this could be a tool. It might not be a tool for every business, but it could be a tool for some existing and potential businesses. And the other thing, too, you know, over the past few years, we've talked about, like a lot about, as a board, like our partnerships with our state agencies. And, you know, I think based on the work that we even have ongoing right now with Mass. Development, you know, a lot of times when people think about a partnership, they think about a partnership where we can just, you know, oh, kind of take, take, take. And with this, and with this partnership, so-called, if we can, and if we could give a little bit, you know, almost kind of like reciprocate, the other type of partnership that we have with Brownfields stuff and everything else, and all of our other work with Mass. Development, I think, I think that's being like a good partner and, you know, I think it makes sense. So, thank you, Wendy.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I just want to say, I think this is great, but as you can tell, I had a lot of questions. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'm not comfortable voting on this tonight until I do some more research. That's just, I just want to know more about it and how it works. And I, and it's probably my own fault for not doing as much research as I should have before I was here tonight. But I just want to let you know, I'm a huge supporter of Clean Energy, and I think it's a great program. I'm just not ready tonight.
Thank you for your consideration.
There is, the ordinance bylaw in your books that I had included and had tried to accommodate to the town of Rockland, that is the recommended language. And I know this was emailed to you earlier.
I think the intent is, it at least provides a service for commercial property owners in town. I know early tonight, somebody mentioned, you know, what does the government get out of it? But actually, the government is supposed to provide services for its people. Those people, in this particular case, happen to be commercial property owners who may or may not live in town, but they still own property in town. So I think this gives them a mechanism where they can go through, they can actually make improvements to the property under the state with the lenders within a program. And I think it gives them the option, if we accept it, to at least look at that, and the individual property owner can make that decision on their own. It just allows us the ability to give them the resources to do that with Mass. Development, you know, as far as...
And I would tell you, if I could, Mr. Chairman, you know, we're not looking to bear any more burden or have any exposure to the town. I met with the treasurer, the tax collector, the accountant, the assessor. We've all gone over this. We all met with Wendy, who was kind enough after presenting the program. She said, "When can I come back?" And I said, "Sit right here," and we brought everyone in. And we had a lengthy hour, hour and a half discussion at that point, and then distributed everything to the treasurer, the collector, the accountant, and the assessor, and provided them the opportunity to go over all of the materials to say, you know, what's the exposure to the town? The town doesn't have any exposure. It is a program that could be beneficial to our commercial interests and our larger landlords.
Well, I think there's similar programs out there that you could use, actually, to demonstrate that they work. There's been other municipalities, and there's been even public housing projects where they've gone through. They've done these type of improvements where it's been financed by a lender or a service provider, just does that. So the offset is the savings by upgrading to energy-efficient equipment, the savings are supposed to take care of the debt service and the loans. So what happens is, ultimately, you'd be able to improve the property. Hopefully, there's a added advantage to the property owner that they would have some, realize some savings, as well as be able to pay the actual debt service. So it's really a win-win for the property owner if they opt to go into it. I, for one, think it's a great program for the town to at least give that commercial property owners that option. I mean, people who own property can make their own decisions, whether they want to enter into an agreement. But I think if we can at least provide them with a program that gives them at least another avenue to pursue that as opposed to all out-of-pocket. And it's something that I know some people aren't willing to make the investment unless they know there's a long-term payoff, or they can pass that service on, as Wendy had spoken earlier about. So I've wanted to see it in other, we'll say, in other areas, but it's a very similar program where it does pay for itself. So I think it would be good if we could at least give that option to property owners in town who are commercial. And again, it's for commercial property owners, so 90% of the commercial property owners, I mean, they're doing it for, I mean, don't get me wrong, some bought their property, they run the businesses there, but at the end of the day, their property is their asset, so they need to maintain that so they can either have that for retirement or something later. And for the town, helps keep the town, it improves the town by them having the ability to keep their property up. So I think it's a win for everybody. So, can we entertain a motion from somebody, or...
I'll make a motion, happy, except for pacing. I understand Deidre's, as far as reluctance to read through it, but you're a lawyer, and that's what you do. You know, it's a commercial, that's what lawyers do. Well, that's what you do, and that's okay. But I think that there's no downside to it, as far as I can see. So I'm going to make that motion, and we accept it.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Upstaying.
Okay, so it's 4-1 in session. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Nice job.
Wendy, thank you.
No lawyer jokes, right?
And I can tell the board that makes Rockland the first community in Commonwealth, Massachusetts, to endorse this program.
A trend service.
Once again, we're setting the pace, not only for the social, but for the state.
Literally.
The pace, yeah.
The pace.
Pun intended.
Pun intended.
Peace, sharp.
Okay, next up, under unfinished business, we have item number four, Reimagine Rockland presentation.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I know that Mike has a presentation for the Reimagine Rockland, but I also want to take this opportunity to announce that we've received, congratulations, and again, through the efforts of Marcy Birmingham in my office, confirming our technical assistance award to the town of Rockland that will enable us, MAPC, to work with the Reimagine Rockland on a project to engage the arts and cultures and a strategy to revitalize Union Street. I believe the technical assistance is in the amount of about $15,000. But once again, we've received another grant to continue to try and promote Rockland. So, MAPC, thank you, and Michael, reimagine.
On the end, if you want, that's true. Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like members of the board, oh, first, oh, before I begin, I want to introduce Ian Burke, who is, who has been a consultant through the Mass. Downtown Initiative Grant Program, another grant the town received the early part of last summer. Ian is from the Western Mass Economic Development Corporation, and has been, has been out here in Rockland all summer, all fall, and has really been a great resource. And I know over the past few months, our board and a lot of people at home have, have heard a lot about, oh, Reimagine Rockland and our efforts. And we're really excited to be here tonight to, to really launch our efforts and to share with you and to talk with the board about our goals and to seek, really, everyone's feedback as we continue to move forward. Just before I begin, I want to draw your attention to the, to like our beautiful logo, the Reimagine Rockland logo. I can actually begin by thanking Danielle Hill, who's, who recently graduated from Rockland High, was like an art student at Rockland High, and really was instrumental in creating the logo, you know, like in leading it forward for us. And Danielle is not able to be here tonight, she's now in college, but I just want to thank her on behalf of everyone involved in this effort. It's, it's really been a team effort. So, thank you, Danielle. But our efforts, as I just mentioned, over the past few months have really sought to capitalize on the work, even on the past, even over the past few years that the town has done with your work, oh, Mr. Ryan, on the housing, on the housing production plan, on our work last year with the successful passage of the 40-hour Smart Growth District. Because we know when it comes to really creating a more down, a more vibrant downtown in Rockland, we already know that we have a lot going for us. We have the location, we actually have a downtown. And that is something that many communities around here and across the Commonwealth don't even have. So we have the infrastructure, we have the businesses, we have good businesses already, we have the community spirit, and we have the people as well. So our goal in this effort has really been harnessing all that and in a very strategic way, moving forward. And I know for people at home, I know for the board, there's been a lot of efforts like this over the past few years. And, you know, as a lifelong resident, I've, I've seen it, I've watched it, I've, I've seen a lot of our starts and stops. But this effort, and obviously, I'm a little biased, but this effort, like I'm really excited about because it really is momentum. There's momentum when we met over the summer with businesses, with residents, with parents last month, like at Jack's Cafe, there's an, there's an energy, there's an excitement about our downtown, like in trying to do something to harness everything I just mentioned that I've never seen before in my life. And what's really unique about this whole effort, really, once and for all, we have the fourth floor artist, which is a huge resource in town, and like underutilized everything. And we really sought to incorporate them and to incorporate the artist as like a huge partner in this effort, not only for them, but really because we know what they can bring to the downtown and what having a, a, a strong arts and culture component really means to having like a really vibrant downtown. So before I turn it over to Ian, I just want to mention a few other things. You'll see that our group is a little bit different from a typical town committee. And that's really been by a design, if you will. The hope in the, in the somewhat short term is for this group to, is to explore the possibility of actually becoming a nonprofit organization. And, and so we can continue our work as a nonprofit, to be, to provide support, to provide advocacy, and to provide other resources to the revitalization efforts in downtown. I want to make one thing clear, though, as we move forward, as a member of the board, and like Mike's been involved, and Deidre's been involved as well, like we realize that to lead these efforts, actually from the town, is actually the Board of Selectmen, like in folks at Town Hall. And one thing, we want to be very careful as a group, as a, as a civic working group or whatever we're called right now, is, is to make sure we're doing these efforts really in our partnership and taking and following the lead of the board. We in no way want to get out in front of the board at any point in time. We really want to work really in tandem and like and support the initiatives of the, like of this board, but also other, you know, other town departments that really have like a stake and an involvement in downtown. So that's really going to be an overarching, a goal is to, is to make sure we're always in close, our communication, very close communication with the town, with the town administrator, to make sure, again, that any really local decisions that have to be made, like as part of this effort, like are made by this board, and, you know, in no way, shape, and form made by Reimagine Rockland. So I want to make that very clear. So steps going forward, we like have this meeting this evening to kick off our efforts to really explain what we're all about. This year, we're really excited to announce that we'll also be having a very strong presence, thanks to Pam Murphy and to Kathy Stewart at the, at the Rockland Holiday Stroll. There'll be pop-up shops led by our artists at the, at the community center. And I believe there's just over half a dozen local artists who'll be there. Also, as part of the Holiday Stroll as well, there'll be like an art stroll component as well. And they'll be at various spots along the Holiday Stroll, like in culminating at, like at the GAI Hall. We, the GAI Hall has always been a, a part of the Holiday Stroll, and, but hopefully through this effort, we'll be able to attract more people there and to really share with the townspeople, really, what a resource that building is also. So, again, all the energy, the momentum, the fun with this group, and it actually, it's actually fun, has been a team effort. And I want to, like, I want to thank Marcy, like everyone here tonight, the school department, Colleen Felizi, all the volunteers, there's just, and really, so many hard to name, but really, to, I have to thank Mike and Deidre for your work on this as well. But to introduce Ian Burke and for me to stop talking so we, so we can really get to the details of this whole thing, and, and so Ian can really explain what it's all about and how we're hoping to go forward. So, thank you.
No problem.
Hello.
Hello, everybody. First of all, I'd like to say all of these people in the back there are members of our working committee that have been toiling away over the last several months. I'm Ann Burke, I'm here through a small grant that came through the Mass Downtown Initiative, and I just wanted to have you refer to, I'm not going to go through every single detail here because it's, it's, there's a lot behind those few words that are in each one of these categories as we tried to lay out, you know, some short-term, medium-term, and longer-term initiatives that this committee would like to work on in partnership with the town. To start off, we, we had this really long name of, I don't know what it was called, the Downtown Rockland Steering Committee. Rolls right off your tongue, rolls right off your tongue. So, one of the first things that we, we thought we would do as a group was to come up with a name that actually might be a little easier to remember and, and put on a banner somewhere that, and so we came up with Reimagine Rockland. And it really is, it was after a lot of conversation around what, what is this, what is this group trying to do and what is its mission going to be? So, Reimagine Rockland was really an idea to not only be respectful of the history and the, and the heritage and the, and the architecture of downtown Rockland, but be, also be able to reimagine it, not to bring it back to where it was maybe twenty years ago or fifty years ago, but to really think about where it could go as it, as we look to the future, respecting the past, but also looking and imagining, reimagining the, the future. So, that's where we, we adopted the name, the, for the steering committee, for the group called Reimagine Rockland, and that is sort of how it wants to be, this group wants to be positioned. And it sees itself as really, we talked, we had a lot of conversation, we spent a whole meeting talking about what's our mission, what's our vision, and we tried to boil it down to all great mission statements, our nine, most great mission statements are nine words or less, so we wanted it to represent that it's an action-oriented group, that this group is not going to be here to turn around and say, Marcy should do all of this stuff for downtown Rockland, but it would be a group that would actually lead a community effort to try to create a vibrant downtown. So, that really kind of positions Reimagine Rockland as an active organization that engages the community to take on a role and to work on various initiatives that they think will, will, will create that thriving downtown. As we, we had a series of meetings, and I, I have to say, it was just so exciting to see the level of participation from young people, from senior citizens, from the municipal government, to the chamber, to artists, and most communities would kill to have the wonderful artists' involvement in, in this process, and, and so you should be really thankful that the Fourth Floor Artists and other artists who are not just part of that one space involved in this process. And what we did was we tried to identify what were the key elements that we would see going forward, were areas of work that needed to be done. So, basically, we talked about enhancing the streetscape so that we could really look at the physical appearance of this downtown, even from things like picking up dog droppings to enhancing the storefronts or doing things with signage to making this downtown a place that people feel is attractive and, and is a place where they want to be, adding more street furniture, having places for people to sit, looking at lighting, looking at things that might take a little longer to do, adding art, adding murals, and, and those kinds of things. So, improving the whole enhanced streetscape is a, is, is one of the things that people are very interested in, in terms of creating a destination where people want to come, either to visit, to shop, to eat, or to, or to open a business. The other major area that we had a lot of discussion around was creating a diverse commercial mix. Now, we have a lot of pizza shops in downtown Rockland, I really couldn't figure out why there was this wonderful selection of pizzas, places in downtown Rockland, and I say embrace that, but maybe you want to look at creating, and there were lots of ideas around creating a commercial mix, how do you promote downtown Rockland as a, as an attractive destination for someone to open a retail store? How do you identify and target those types of, of commercial opportunities that you'd like to see happen here, and some steps you might take in order to promote the downtown for those kinds of things? We also spent a lot of time talking about the, the, the reality that you, that, that you have a, art, art and culture happening in this downtown, and how do you use that and capitalize on that as a catalyst, to, to differentiate yourself from other places and to really help the downtown, you know, really take advantage of that fact, that you do have a work, working artists who are located in Rockland and who, and how do you build on that? And then finally, how do you market the downtown as a destination for visitors, for residents, and for businesses to, to happen? So, what we did, and I'm not going to go through each and every one of these, but you can read them yourselves, but we created a plan that, and there's work behind each one of these sections, but to create some, some short-term goals in each one of these areas, from streetscape, marketing, arts and culture, business development, and infrastructure, and how do we create some short-term things that can be done in a relatively affordable fashion, that we can look to collaborate with others to, to implement those kinds of things, and to show progress, to show that you're, so nothing is, nothing will make people walk away from a project faster than not seeing progress in the short run. I'm a city planner by my background, so I've seen lots of plans sit on the shelf, and we don't want to see that happen. So, we, we're very strategic about creating some short-term, some medium-terms, and some longer-term strategies, and those, some of those longer-term strategies in reality are going to take resources that you don't have in hand right now, but, but we also tried to identify some possible resources that the community or the town might look to down the road in order to try to fund some of the kinds of things that you might want to do in a long-term basis. So, so, so the exciting thing is that, as you just announced this one little grant, there are, there's thought already happening for, as we approach some of the short-term things, how do you, how are we working towards some of the medium and longer-term strategies that this group would like to implement? And with, as, one of the exciting things here in this plan is that Reimagine Rockland really spent a whole session figuring out who's not at the table, who else needs to be a part of this process? You know, are there churches, are there communal, fraternal organizations, are there the municipality, you know, the, the business community, businesses themselves, the artists, the young people, to really make this inclusive and to really make this something that will have legs that will continue down the road? We have, there's a working group here on the back page that you'll see, and I'm sure we've missed somebody, and if I did, we apologize, so that's the "and growing" part of this, because there are a lot of people who have participated in these discussions, sometimes just once, sometimes multiple times, and we're hoping that this will continue to build. The organizational chart here has a steering committee at the top, we'll draw that steering committee, and then there are five subcommittees that will be chaired by people from the steering committee, and, and, and the community at large will be invited to be an active participant in making those subcommittees really work. So, that's sort of the big plan, the broader plan for Reimagine Rockland, and I mean, we put this little quick and dirty little plan together so that you will have something to take away, it will change and grow as we work on the, the working sessions. I think the next steps, as Mike mentioned, is that Reimagine Rockland right now are volunteers, it's all community volunteers, Marcy's been kind enough to, and Mike has been kind enough to, to chair and to staff this, but as it goes forward, it might, it might want to be a more permanent nonprofit, which would then give it the opportunity to apply for different kinds of grants and things like that, that might help them implement some of the short, medium, and longer-term strategies. So, it is indeed a partnership, because as with anything, there are some of these things that, that Reimagine Rockland would like to do that can't be done in the, as, as a nonprofit alone, that really is a partnership with the community, because there are resources that the community can bring to the table to make those things happen. So, that's, that's the high-level thirty-thousand-foot view of the, of the world, there's a lot of work, and there's, the committees right now, as the marketing committee's been active, they've created the logo, they've started the Twitter, the Instagram, the, our Facebook page.
Just the Facebook page.
Just the Facebook page, we haven't done all the other stuff, but there's a way, one of the things that we really want to do is to communicate, is to communicate what's happening, to communicate opportunities, to help promote and sell this region, this, this downtown, and to try to be, to do it in a, in a cost-effective way that, that, that really can be pulled off. So, that's kind of the big picture. Any, any questions, any additional comments from the committee?
I just had a comment, I know I, I helped give you guys some suggestions for this as well, but one of the things I think I forgot, and I apologize, and I don't know whether it may belong in streetscape goals or infrastructure goals, but all of our receiving waters are on the 303D list, DEP's 303D list, they're all polluted. And with the anticipated NIPD's permit coming, we should, in addition to looking at our green spaces, we should start thinking about what stormwater BMPs would be most efficient to get those pollutants out of the water since our stormwater discharges to those rivers and, and receiving waters. I mean, while we're planning the, the whole design, now's the time to think about the costs associated with those and what would be best for downtown, more urban-like area rather than some of our more wetland areas. So, just, I just don't want it to get forgotten and then have to come back and do a do-over, you know?
Yeah, and I, I think that's one of the, that's one of the, there are those issues that are infrastructure issues, that, that in an infrastructure committee, you can bring the right people together to kind of talk about and be able to think about some of those things that really are kind of long-term strategies.
Some are very beautiful, some stormwater treatment can be very, very beautiful, so it can be like a landscape feature, too. So, I think there's a lot of overlap there, so.
Right, right, and that, and that's why, and sort of as, as an organizational structure, as each one of these working committees can feed up to a steering committee that can, because there are things that are going to cross over from, from one committee to the other. Marketing, for example, is going to touch on many different, different places as our art and culture and, and some of the streetscape opportunities, so there will be overlap.
Have you guys had any thoughts on parking?
Yes, parking is, parking is sort of rolled into the infrastructure discussion, because there's, there are, the, the, there were lots of conversation around parking as, as an asset and also as a need, and, but also as an asset, you know, you have, you have a lot of, you do have parking, a fair amount of parking, but there, there are opportunities to add new parking, and there may be places where you can add new parking, and then how is that added in a way that's accessible, affordable, and attractive? And those were conversations that, you know, so parking sort of rolls into the infrastructure committee, and then some overlap in other committees as well, but certainly that was a topic of conversation in, in, in many of the working discussions that we had.
Another item that might be helpful is, I know that some of us seniors use the Bat Bus to make appointments and whatnot, and it might be something to look at in the future that maybe you can put a couple of covered bus stops along the route so that they could actually view some of these, we'll say, arts and restaurants and shops, and because it's another way for these folks to, that they get out, they go to the senior center, they go places, but, you know, they actually spend money as well, so I think it would probably, it could probably help, and I'm sure we could probably convince our Bat Bus partners, you know, even if it was to take some time to go through and maybe incur those costs to add the covered stop here and there. And then secondly, you could possibly sponsor some artwork or some sponsorship on those bus stops that would help go back and help promote Reimagine Rockland, because then you can utilize maybe some of those funds to go back. And then another comment would be, as most people have noticed, Town Hall is actually, with cooperation of the highway departments, actually expanding the green space to the right of Town Hall, so that's going to give something else for downtown people to come down to. So, I think everybody, if they do a little bit, and everybody does their part, before you know it, you'll have a whole lot, and I know that a lot of people in communities have been working, you know, whether it be to clean up the rail trail, or make sure that properties are changed and cleaned up, or if they're sold, new ownership's coming in and they're making improvements, so I think all those things add to making the downtown, we'll say, more viable. And I know we've had programs in the past where we've had some street signage improvements and things like that, so I know grants have been big in the town, so I think this is another step in the right direction, so.
I think one of the things that there was, there's a lot of interest in terms of looking at business development, are opportunities to support existing businesses that are here, you've got some, some businesses that have been here for a long time and that have a good, a good clientele, giving them ways to help expand that clientele and bring more people in and, and, and take advantage of, of working with, you know, the eat local, buy local kinds of concepts that, that have been successful in other, other places. So, you know, not only looking at that business attraction idea to bring, to bring, to bring additional businesses in, but also to support the existing businesses that are here. And one of the, one of the very interesting discussions we had and is being implemented is that a lot of the businesses had expressed their willingness and to, to work with the artists to, you know, to try to, to collaborate, to, to, to provide retail opportunities for the artists who are, who are there in, in existing businesses that are, that are down there. So, so there are lots of ways that, that we have been exploring, or the group has been exploring, to, to, to look for strategic partnerships, collaborations, you know, how do you help promote each other, ways that pretty cost-effectively you can try to, to spread the word and, and expand the markets and, and, and bring in new customers to, to come to the downtown. And one of the things that people are very interested in doing is not have this be all, everybody on the committee be of a certain generation, that, that to really think about how do you get people with families, how do you get young people? The comment was made at one of our meetings that, you know, that, that you, we need to think about things that would bring families and bring young people in, and, and to try to, to try to, try to be creative around that, that thinking and implementing those kinds of programs.
Just a thought, but I know we have the assistant superintendent on the board, but have we reached out to, I know the students helped with the design, but have we reached out to actual students that may are the future, you know what I'm saying, of Rockland? Have we reached out to them?
That was a conversation that we had had.
Great.
We did a lot of focus groups already, and that was a planned focus group that we're going to do, we wanted to make this presentation tonight, but that is on the table to speak to the students themselves.
You were asking about other partners, I was just thinking, that's not a bad.
Can I just say, as part of the art stroll, which is the Holiday Stroll, we have, every venue will have an artist, a student artist at the venue, presenting some of their work, so that's a start there with the students.
That's great.
And, and also the, we, we, we were able, and I don't, he's not here tonight, but one, a couple of younger folks who their mothers dragged along, I think, to some of the meetings, actually have been trying to help us with some of the, the, the digital aspects of our communication strategies, so.
Like, and one other thing, I just, before I forget, we touched upon like all the segments, if you will, that were, you know, that we're trying to really make sure we're engaged within it, and if I can just, I'll call Jeff Phelps from the chamber up, I'll call in, and, and Shishi, if that's okay, just so they can, a lot of times, as everyone is, like understands, a lot of these efforts have been just like a, a Town Hall, a selectman effort, and going back to what I mentioned, the fact that we're and have such a diversity, like if future them can really just highlight, and what they're involving and why they think this initiative.
Hi, I'm Jeff Phelps, I'm one of the co-chairs of the Rockland Chamber of Commerce and co-owner of the Phelps Insurance Agency here in town, and the, the, Rockland Chamber has, has identified the downtown as, as really being kind of a key initiative for us in the, in the near future. You know, as it's been mentioned, there are a lot of core businesses that have been here in town, lucky enough, we're one of them, the banks, I think of Rockland Athletics, I think of a lot of the, the restaurants in, in the downtown, but, you know, it certainly benefits the existing businesses to have a viable downtown, and, and that's why we're, we were so anxious to be part of this project. And again, to piggyback on what Mike had said, you know, I, I think some of the efforts in the past have been kind of thwarted because there really wasn't a consortium of people involved, we have people from, obviously, the Town Hall, we've got people from, you know, civic organizations, business organizations, so there really is a, a consortium, we, we do have to probably widen the net a little bit, you know, certainly, one of the things we've talked about was, you know, to Deidre's point, getting a little younger perspective involved, you know, because we're all of a certain age here in this room, I think.
I think so.
Yes, yes, so, so no, we're excited about it, and like I said, it's been, there's been a good energy involved in it, they're exciting meetings to go to because things are being talked about and, and there's progress being made, and I think it's going to probably, you know, it's probably going to speed up in the future, so, you know, a couple of things, you know, Dave, I, I think of, Dave Taylor's here, obviously, Dave, the, the sidewalks and the, and the curbs in town, things are, things are really starting to take shape, and, you know, I, I think he deserves some credit for that. some credit for that, certainly. And again, you talk about kind of the first steps in the process in trying to make things look a little nicer and a little more inviting, and that's certainly one of them. So it's, you know, it's a noticeable improvement. And I know there was some landscaping done, some weeding done, some things like that, that, again, small changes, but, but they show pride in the community, they show a clean, inviting downtown, and that's where businesses are going to want to be located. That's where people are going to want to go. So, so thanks.
Good evening, Chairman, Board. I'm calling for Lizzie, Assistant Superintendent of the Schools. And I'm very happy to be part of this Reimagine Rockland group. I have to thank Marcy Birmingham for bringing us all together. If it wasn't for you, Marcy, none of this would be happening. So thank you so much. And the artists that are involved. And what I want to say is that the families of Rockland wanted downtown to go to. They want to bring their children. They want to have family outings and so forth, and restaurants. I'm happy to represent the schools, and the big part of the schools is the families. And I can be that resource to bring the families of Rockland together for, as we call it, a vibrant downtown. So we have a PAC group that we met with. We have wonderful families that are involved, parents that are involved. So if we could all just pull together and do it, I'm a happy resource to do that, and I'm looking forward to being part of it. So thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Shishi McGann, President of the Fourth Floor Artists Association. And there are over 100 members who are working artists in two buildings, the Sandpaper Factory and the ET Wright Building, all ages. Some, we have a 90-year-old man who's award-winning, and it goes all the way down. We also want to have more communication with the schools and the kids. And we're offering to have a show for them in the spring in the gallery. We have a newly renovated gallery. And we're going to bring the kids in, and hopefully that will get a lot of the parents to see what we have for resources in the town. We have been involved in the Arts and Culture Subcommittee for a few months now. We've got a lot of buzz going around. The artists are happy to get the word out that we're willing and able to help in any way that we can. We've got quite a few volunteers that have come to the meetings. We're going to be involved in the art stroll that is part of the holiday stroll coming up. There's over 20, probably 25, between all the different venues where we're going to be situated. So there'll be plenty of excitement going on for the adults and for the kids as well. There's kids' activities. And then also, we're going to be having open studios in both our buildings coming up the weekend after next, which is November 18th and 19th, and that's from noon to 5:00. It's free, there's plenty of parking, and we hope that everybody comes, talks to the artists, have a little cup of tea, some coffee, a glass of wine, and go from studio to studio and building to building. So we're really excited to be part of this community. We've been working towards this for a while, and hopefully it will be a good partnership. So thank you.
And again, just to conclude, I really want to thank Ann Burke for all her work, everyone here tonight. And I could, like, actually name everyone in every row here, but I won't do that because that would be painful. But, but thank you sincerely, everyone. And also thank Mike and Deidra, both of them. We mentioned the subcommittees. Oh, Mike will be leading the Business Development Subcommittee with the Chamber. Deidra will be leading the Infrastructure Subcommittee. And, you know, already there's, we have volunteers and our Subcommittee members who have already been plugged in and will be meeting, reconvening everyone sometime over the next month. But again, thank the board, thank Marcy, thank the town for supporting, and we're excited to get going, so.
One little sort of half humorous and half not humorous. I tell people, you know, we got this beautiful thing, Reinvent Rockland going on, and one of the things I hear is, can we reinvent Rockland without the bump outs? Just to bring it up, because it is, it is an elephant in the room, and a lot of people, the town is split. It doesn't seem 50-50 either, over their lack of desire for them, but I know it was a state thing at the time. But I just want to bring it up so that all aspects of the revitalization can be talked about, and that can be either said that we have to do it, or it's the things that could be adjusted, is the things that could be put on them so they don't become a runover spot. You know, so when people turn the corner, they, you know, they're sometimes a little shocked on them, you know what I mean?
Larry, I know you'll be shocked to hear this, but every focus group we've had, the bump outs have been brought up.
First thing, right? Again, I didn't hear it tonight.
Yeah, you got it in.
So the only reason I did, I hear about it all the time in the morning.
Yeah.
Between 4:00 and 8:00 AM in the morning, I get an awful lot of conversation regarding what's wrong with Rockland, or what could be, what could be improved in Rockland, let's put it that way. So that was just one of them. That's why I just brought it up.
You mean the universally accepted bump outs?
Well.
Traffic flies now.
I know. Nice presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next up in the new business, we have item number six, Players Sports Bar request for early hours Thanksgiving Day. Mr. Chalka?
Mr. Chairman, item number six. As you know, it's that time of year, but there are a few facilities that like to open early on Thanksgiving Day. We have a request from Jackie Barati, who is the owner of Players Sports Bar and Grill, asking to serve from 8:00 to 11:00. I don't know, is Jackie here? Everyone behind me, but I think we said at the time, not, in the past, we've done this as long as other businesses as well, send a letter in and we notify the place to buy.
Right, exactly. If they send a letter in saying they'd like to open, we'll do that. And I'll make a motion that we approve.
All those in favor? See you in a minute, folks. Thank you. Item number seven, one-day license for Rockland Memorial Library.
I think Jack Wood is here. Jack?
Hello?
Ms. Chairman, members of the board, and everyone else. I'm the President of the Friends of Rockland Memorial Library, Rockland Memorial Library Foundation, Inc. And we, this will be our third year that we've had our wine and hors d'oeuvre reception for our patrons. And we also invite town and state officials. So look in your mailboxes for your invitation. It will be coming. So we ask for your support for our one-day liquor license for our evening event. It's become already kind of a social, something on the social calendar. So, and since I have the, have the microphone here, let me just mention a few things that we have coming up. This is a busy time of year for the, for the friends. So right now, we already have, in our Art in the Rotunda program, ongoing, we have Shan McDonald from the Fourth Floor Artists. Monday, we have a speaker with Julia Rayberg from Worthy Villages in Guatemala. Of course, we'll be at the Holiday Stroll. The rotunda at the library will be open. We'll be giving out free candy canes and gingerbread men, and we'll be having the popular Victorian carolers singing in the rotunda. It's, it's great. It's magical. And then we top it all off with this very event that we're talking about now. So, any questions?
Guys do a great job.
We had a motion.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Jack Wood had asked for a moment to discuss a recent event at the library. Jack, you want to take the microphone, if you would be so kind, with the chairman's permission? Overstepping my bounds, I apologize, sir.
Actually, I spoke to Jack on the way in.
I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to speak. I just want to bring townspeople up to date with what's going on at the library. In the early morning hours of this past Monday, there was a malfunction in the second-floor workroom, which resulted in a water leak. And that went on for a number of hours. It was detected when the smoke detectors went off. And as a result, the Fire Department notified members of our Board of Trustees. And I'd like to thank Pat Foley and Ken Zeb for showing up and assisting the Rockland Fire Department, which I'd like to thank the Rockland Fire Department and the Electrical Inspector's Office for showing up and trying to help us out. The, as a result, the library will be closed for the rest of the week. They were going to be closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, anyway, because of the Veterans Day weekend. But we have SURF Pro in there. They, the damage has been to carpeting, ceilings, tiles, and drywall. There's been no damage to any books, any equipment. It's in the, it's in the new section of the building. The old section is not affected by this at all. And the library is hoping to reopen on Monday. The, our library director has been working with Mr. Chalka, Mr. Hart, and the insurance agents to get the adjusters out there and get everything lined up. So it's, it's been an adventure. There's, the Board of Trustees has been working on a number of projects in the building. And the board consists of Pat Foley, Ken Zeb, Janet Khan, Cora Leonardi, and our past Chair, Kathy Looney. The, right now, what's been ongoing, we're painting the interior of the building, but that obviously has to stop until we rectify what's been going on. We've been working on a list of priorities to improve the building. And as a matter of fact, we, we're going to be replacing the roof on the addition that was put on in 1992. The bids will be opened on the 15th of November. We're updating our security system. We're studying improvements to handicap access. And with the help of the Friends and Tim Wells of the Rockland School Department, he's their technical person, the meeting room projector technology has been updated. So that'll be very helpful for the upcoming events. But for anyone who's concerned, if you have any library books you need to drop off, you can go to the Belmont Street entrance. There's a door in the wall that you can put your books in. If you need to access a library, we're part of the Old Colony Network, so you can go to the surrounding towns and they will honor your library card. And don't worry about any overdue books. I'm sure there'll be a dispensation for the library staff. The staff has been working very hard. Our Director, you know, Beverly Brown and her people are coping with the situation. But that's what's going on in the library, and I thank you for letting me talk to you. Any questions? Great.
Just one quick one, I'm sorry. So the staff is still reporting?
Yes. There's, they've had to move a number of items. The, so they're assisting.
With that?
Yes. And that will all be, SURF Pro hopefully will be out of there by tomorrow. The, it affected the workroom on the second floor, the bathrooms on the, on the main floor, the lobby. Where, as I mentioned, we're in the process of repainting the interior of the building. The wallpaper is being removed, so if people walk, walk in there, what you see on the walls is not a result of the water damage. It's that the wallpaper has been taken down and it's going to be painted over. It'll be improved. But that's just an ongoing process that the Board of Trustees is prioritizing to improve the building. Thank you very much.
Item number eight, license renewals. Mr. Chalka?
Mr. Chairman, there has been some discussion. I know that I have talked with a couple of members of the board, and I don't know what the will and will of the board is. Alcohol licenses have to be sent into, renewals have to be sent into the state by December 1st. I had been speaking with a couple of members regarding the seeming proliferation of empty NIPS all over town. I know I mentioned it at one other point. I don't know what the board wants to do. I had recommended a couple of months ago to the board that they consider a ban on the sale of NIPS at the liquor stores. One of the members indicated to me, so I guess it's a great time for discussion, one of the members indicated to me that we might want to let people know that we're contemplating this and invite people to attend a future meeting. I don't know where that leads us to discussion with the board. Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to make a motion to table the approval of all licenses until we at least put the word out to the people that have applied for the licenses that we're considering to do this. I, at this point, you know, I think it's a great idea to prohibit the sale of NIPS in Rockland. But I'd like to give them a chance to work with us and, you know, come up with some kind of consideration of cleaning up the area, you know, on the rail trail, in front of, behind the Calvary Chapel, there's a pathway over there. I mean, my front lawn is not really a result of the ones necessarily sold in Rockland, but I know every time I go out there, there's, there's NIPS all over the place. So I think making a motion to at least invite them up or put word out there that we're considering prohibiting the sale of NIPS in town would be a.
I'm a little bit more in favor of just implementing it and letting them come back to us. If we stop the sale of it, then, then they're going to have to deal with it. And they're going to have to come up with a plan to, if you, I don't care what package store you walk around, I don't care what building you walk around in Town of Rockland, there's NIPS. I don't care where they are. Downtown, behind the heavy store, I see them everywhere. Rail trail is just a, more of an eyesore because we have a liquor store right there in the property, and people come and use the trail, and they just, you know, people are inconsiderate. The other thing I see on the rail trail, too, and not to defend anybody, is Dunkin' Donuts cups. Two Dunkin' Donuts on the rail trail, and we see a lot of Dunkin' Donuts cups. Not as many as we used to, but it's just, it's just an inconvenient thing. And I think, quite frankly, I say, do it, and then face the fallout after that. Let them come to us and prove to us that it's a worthwhile endeavor for them to do it. And maybe someday in the future, we'll bring it back again. These all have to be in a month, right? December?
The alcohol. There are other licenses on the board.
Just the all alcohol package is what we're talking about, correct?
I'd like to amend, if possible, Mike's motion, that we table only the alcohol licenses for the reason that he stated in his motion. I, too, am interested in looking into the prohibition of the sale of NIPS as a clause, a condition upon the all alcohol licenses. But I do believe that our licensees are entitled to notice and should have a right to be heard. So I am going to amend, make an amendment to Mr. O'Loughlin's motion as stated.
I agree with that.
To clarify that amendment, are we talking package stores?
Right.
Because all, some alcohol licenses are for establishments that you can only consume while on-site. You can't take with you, so.
We do have some package store renewals that are not before the board tonight. We could send out a second letter to everybody and let them know that the board is considering that action.
Yep.
Or whatever action the board so deems, I guess.
So we have a motion and a second? All in favor? So.
We will, with the permission of the board, it's my intention to notify the people that were on the agenda tonight that we are holding those licenses, one, and notifying everyone else whose license is up for renewal. Get a letter out. I imagine we'll have a full crowd at the next meeting. And we're going to have the discussion. We'll place that on the agenda. If I could, Mr. Chairman, we have another, other licenses that can be considered.
As you were.
All alcohol club license for the Harmon Golf and Fitness, all alcohol for the Rocket, for the South Shore Racket and Fitness on VFW, and all alcohol for the China Plaza, also an all alcohol for the Hotel Thomas or the Banner Pub.
Those to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? So.
All right. Mr. Chairman, common victualer, that was a 5-0 vote.
You got any wine and malt package?
I don't see anything else down here, but we've got the package. I don't see anything else down here, but we've got the package stores separated, Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, but wine and malt, they're not selling nips.
Yep. We can vote on those tonight.
So we can vote on them, they're not selling nips. Number three down, all alcohol, all alcohol, wine and malt.
Okay, so you want to, wine and malt, Tanya's Deli and Quick Mart, and the Easy Mart.
Those two approve?
Second.
All those in favor? unanimous vote? Thank you.
Then we're just going to hold the two.
Right.
Hold.
So you'll hold the two and you'll notify?
All others.
Other license holders of the package or all alcohol package.
Common victual license, the Best Western on Hingham Street, Tanya's on East Water Street, Gao's Sushi.
Excuse me, Mr. Chaka, the Hotel Thomas, the all alcohol...
We already did that.
We did?
Yes.
We did.
Got to follow along, Mr. Ryan.
Oh, fecal man, I'm sorry. I didn't see now, remember, I'm old. I'm the oldest guy, you have to have a little mercy on me.
Common Vic, Best Western on Hingham Street, Tanya's Deli on East Water Street, Gao's Sushi on Union Street, Dunkin' Donuts East Water, Dunkin' Donuts on Market, Dina's Pizza on Hingham, China Plaza on Market, Hammond Golf and Fitness on Concord, Hotel Thomas Banner Pub on Union Street, Greek House of Pizza on Center Street.
Those two approve?
Second.
All those in favor? unanimous vote?
Automatic amusement pub, Hotel Thomas Banner Pub.
Those two approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Don't screw it up, it's going to make the minutes easy. Leave those two alone. Entertainment, China Plaza on Market Street, Hammond Golf and Fitness on Concord Street, Hotel Thomas on Union Street.
Those two approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Inholders license, the Best Western on Hingham Street, Hotel Thomas on Union Street.
Those two approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
I remember one night, they were having fun here, and they made different motions for every one of them, which makes the minutes a half an hour longer. Class one license, International Motorsports on Hingham Street, Prime Hyundai South on Hingham, uh, excuse me, International Motors on Market Street, Prime Hyundai South on Hingham.
Those two approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Class two, International Motorsports on Markets, Motorsports on Market Street, WCS Automotive on Bishop Lane.
Those two approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next up on the agenda, item number nine, ambulance abatements.
I don't believe Mr. Duffy is here tonight, but we've been through this quarterly. We abate the ambulance abatement, those portions that, of ambulance billing that we do not believe are collectible, but in order to clean up the books, we abate. For the month of July, June, the chief is looking to abate $90,643, $93.02 for July, $97,817.43, and for August, $88,817.98 for, um, that doesn't read right. And he has unpaid balances over 270 days of $182,305 unpaid balances greater than 270 days. He'd like to abate those as well for a grand total of $459,633.43.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Ryan stands.
Four and one. Okay, next up, we have item number 10, Town Administrators Reporting Correspondents. Mr. Chaka.
In your books, and it was late edition, we have received correspondence from Town Accountant Hart. It goes on to explain that due to the recent departure of the accountant at Southfield, Redevelopment Authority, with only a few days' notice, they are looking for some help. We've talked with Mr. Henderson, we've talked to Lynn, and her last name, apologize, fails me at the moment, but who is the Chairman of the Board over there. They have come to Town of Rockland, they are familiar with Eric's work, both as a finance committee member over there at advisory capacity, and have asked if he and possibly Mary Jane from our office, outside of their normal working hours here at Town Hall, could take on. Now, you do not need to approve Mary Jane, she can do whatever she wants in her free time. However, Mr. Hart's agreement would require the board authorize him to do. We think it will be no longer than eight weeks, and he's thinking no more than 10 hours, but it still needs the approval to help Southfield get over the hurdle until they fill the position. Scott Boyce has left, it was fairly short notice. Obviously, we want Southfield in the process to go forward, and he's looking for permission from this board to help them out for short term.
I was able to attend this meeting, the last SRA meeting, and I just want to express to people how thankful the board was for Eric and Mary Jane's help. They were kind of left hanging, and he was very, very helpful in, in assisting them, and they were very thankful. And I just want to make sure that the people are aware that, you know, that that's out there, and they were very, they were very happy, and they're, they're, you know, they had reached out for private work to private consultants, and due to the timing of when all this needs to be done, most private consultants wouldn't even give them a cost, and those that did were more than twice what the salaries of those two people would be. So I think that this is a good neighborly thing to do, personally. So I'm in favor of this.
Is that a vote?
Oh, I make, yeah, that's my motion, my motion to approve.
I just have a question real quick. I don't have a problem with this at all. My only question is, the request, it seems very open-ended, and I'm wondering, Eric at the end of this letter says he believes that this may be like up to eight weeks. I'm just wondering if, maybe at 10 or 11 weeks, we see...
It also goes on to say they're known as, as an added basis. So I think it covered that. I mean, I think the intent is to go through and they'll hire replacement staff to handle that position, but in the short term, as Deidre had mentioned, they had reached out to some outside organizations that were private, and they couldn't fulfill the need in the timeframe.
And it seems like, sorry, I'm sorry.
And secondly, prior to any of this, our rep, Tom Henderson, had approached me about it, and I said that I would support it provided that we ran it by legal counsel, so I want everybody to know that this did run by legal counsel before anything was to take place because we didn't want to put Rockland in a position that may jeopardize any revenue coming in or out, so. And again, Eric already serves over there on the advisory board, so he already had some firsthand knowledge, and he was able to actually get in there quickly and pick some things up in order for them to continue their business. And again, this is a short-term solution, this is not a long-term solution, so.
Eric does not want it to be a long-term solution. He's...
No, yeah, I'm just asking, like, in like 10 weeks or so, we can hear what's happening.
The driving force is the setting of their tax rate, so that, there's a hard and fast deadline for that, so that's really the driving force behind this, and that's why the deadline is so soon, that's why so many private companies were like hands off, yeah.
Any other questions? We had a motion, do we have a second?
I second it already.
Okay, all those, any other questions, our discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous vote? Thank you.
I also see, Mr. Chairman, that it's on there, that the last pack I filed, requested man on the advisory board. Is his appointment up?
Well, he's just saying during this time period, so he's fine.
Oh, he's all set?
Thank you.
Yep.
Second letter in your package is just approval, a letter notifying us that the Mayor Hedlund has agreed with us on our appointment of David Rubin of South Weymouth to be on the, that's the joint approval with the redevelopment, so that has gone through. Letting you know there is a hearing on November 14th at 7:00 PM regarding the Studley Pond. We have a $1,000 cost in order to get those boards removed, but we have to have the engineers do everything that is required, and letting you know if any of the board members wish to attend. I have been working with Doug Galemy and want to thank him for his cooperation in trying to expedite this so that we can get those boards out of the dam. As you know, the fourth floor Otis are having their open studios weekend, November 18th and 19th. That's just an advertisement, and this has been a public service announcement. And letting you know that we have reached the goal in three of our categories and still pushing towards the Rockland Saves. If anybody wants to still participate, we're advertising on the sign-out front, we're advertising here in the lobby. There was a table out, and there will be a presentation at the next meeting for exactly where we are at, but we're still looking for, all of the things can be done for anybody. There are still vouchers available for heating systems, wireless thermostats, and refrigerator, freezer recycling. We've met our goals. There are also insulation and air sealing programs. We have not reached the goal that we had hoped, but maybe with the onset of a little bit of cold weather, it might spur some action on some homeowners. If anyone needs the number, please call Town Hall, and we will put you in touch with someone who will come to your home at your convenience and do a full assessment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next up, we have Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of all of the Board of Selectmen, and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. With that, Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention one thing. I was able to attend my first teen center advisory board meeting, I'm the liaison to that board. They just seem to always be holding the meetings on the same night as the Selectmen's meeting, so this was the first one I really had an opportunity to go to. And on that same night, my son, who just turned 12, who's in the sixth grade, got to attend his first night at the teen center and had a great time. But I, I just want to mention that that board really relies on the volunteers in our community to make sure that there's a safe space for our teens to go at night, on a Friday night from 7:00 to 10:00. They're looking for volunteers to come and supervise the teens. I know my son had a great time, he had no voice for the next three days, so you, I think you have to be able to deal with loud noise. But, and they're also looking for more volunteers for the board itself. They, they do have some employees now, part-time employees that come in, I believe they're from the schools, so the students are familiar with them, which is great, and they have a lot of really interesting things on their agenda this year, including maybe doing like a battle of the bands type of thing, as well as having a magician come in, and a reptile guy, and all sorts of really nippy things. But they are really looking for volunteers, both at the board level and at the, just the volunteer watching the kid level. So I would urge people who may have upcoming teens to, to maybe give back now so that their teens will have somebody there in the future, and those who have had teens who've enjoyed the program to maybe think about giving back to the current teens who use it. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. O'Loughlin.
I have no comments on it.
Mr. Ryan?
Ah, me either. It's a quiet night this week.
Mike, Mr. Mullen?
Just very quickly, I've talked way too much tonight, but I just want to echo what Mr. Chaka just mentioned regarding the Rockland Saves program. The program is extremely valuable. After hearing about it for the past six or seven months, I had an assessment on Friday, and that went very well, I guess. I am going to need some insulation, but the price, the discounts, as I'm available to all residents and homeowners, like as part of this program, is definitely something that I encourage everyone to look into. I'll be doing, or having some insulation in my attic and some air sealing done in the next few weeks, and excited about that. And again, I won't belay by the point, so shut up now, and that's all I'll have.
Thank you. I would just like to say briefly, it was actually encouraging to see all the new faces in the audience tonight with Reimagine Rockland. I think it takes a cross-section and a diverse group of residents and businesses to actually make this whole thing work. And it's evident by the fact that small changes are happening throughout town, not just with the downtown, but throughout town. And I think people's perception of Rockland has improved greatly in other communities. As we said tonight, when we passed the Pace Program, I mean, we're the first one in the state to do that. We were the first one in the state to do a lot of things, and we've been the first one on the South Shore, so we've really been taking a great leadership role on the South Shore to go through and make changes that not only improves government, but also improves the services for the residents and the businesses, you know, that our local government serves. So I think those are good things, and all that's been with the cooperation of our employees. I mean, it's evident just by the fact, when you look outside here to the right during the day, with cooperation of the Highway Department, we're getting an improvement to Town Hall, which will actually benefit a lot of the residents as well because the farmer's market can expand, it gives you a place to just reflect, or if you want to walk downtown and have lunch there, it's, it's going to be a nice place to do that. So it creates opportunities for everybody, just these small steps, and, you know, it's nice to see that everyone has their own take on the town, and everyone's kind of putting their own stamp on it, whether that's through infrastructure or through businesses or seeing people come here. And even tonight, the small steps regarding having this, an open discussion, a forthcoming open discussion regarding the nips, I mean, we have a lot of volunteers that go down and take care of the rail trail annually, and I know, you know, from walking the rail trail with some of those volunteers, that it's just hot, and when you find trash and debris from inconsiderate people. So if we need to take steps to, we'll say curb that or curtail those actions, you know, I mean, that's what we need to consider, and some of these businesses actually have to step up and take some responsibility for some of their customers. I know it's difficult at times because once it leaves the door, they really can't say too much about it, but maybe if we prohibit that product or other products, it, it will either help them sell different products, or at least point out the fact to other communities, and maybe they'll take the same stance. I mean, you look around, some other communities have banned use of plastic bags, they've banned other things. I'm not saying we need to do that yet, but it's something we could, should certainly have a conversation on, because we want to keep our town clean, we want it to be healthy, we want it to be litter-free. And I know with the wind and whatnot we've had last week, it was, you know, the barrels, you know, the new recycle barrels and things, I mean, all things considered, they, they held up pretty well, but with the wind we had, if we had regular trash barrels, I'm sure we were seeing a lot more trash out there, so. Those are small things that, it doesn't sound like much, you know, by the town going through and we changed the recycling, the program for trash pickup, but those small steps have helped to keep the town cleaner and make it more desirable and presentable, so. I think small steps lead to big steps, and, you know, once you climb the big steps, then, you know, we're in a position where, you know, everyone wants to be, you know, here. And one of the other things I'd like to point out is, we seem to take a lot of things for granted in town, or in our state for that matter. I mean, who knew we had 100 Otis in our own, you know, our own little Rockland, if you will? So things like that are eye-opening, and I think, you know, with the holiday stroll, a lot of, you know, it's a lot of the same volunteers that do that, and we seem to take that for granted, but it's time that we start to get new volunteers involved, and time that new people step up and add their, you know, if you will, their, their thumbprint or their, their print to it, and leave something behind, and so on. So those are things that, you know, I think will make things great. As far as the Amazon, we haven't heard anything yet, we're hopefully still in contention. We haven't heard anything to tell us we're not, so we're still in the running, and I think that's another thing that helps put us on the map as well. So I think Rockland's doing, doing pretty good considering. I know some residents had lost power on that storm as well, but our utility companies worked diligently with the Fire Department and our emergency management to make sure that people were restored as quickly as possible, including traffic lights and things like that, that, you know, for safety. So I like to, you know, thank those people for doing that. I know some other communities weren't as fortunate, you know, they were still without power for many more days longer than some of us in our town were, so. Like I said, sometimes you take a lot of things for granted until you actually go for, either go without it or you don't know what's there, so it's, it's nice to see that we're able to continue on. we're able to continue on. With that, we have an executive session tonight for grievance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
That's the people called.
Yep.
I'm sorry. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you for joining us tonight.